And I'm going to start the recording.
Awesome. Okay Stacy, the time of the tone is 5:31. We're going to go ahead and convene this special meeting of the city planning board. We're going to start out with roll call and then approval of minutes. And I'm just going to look at everybody. Okay Stacy Jovic.
Here.
Taya Crawley.
Here.
Tori Lyons.
Here.
Shannon Holmes.
Present.
Melissa Newt.
Here.
And Jesse Wilcox is also here as is Matthew Deputy City Planner. Awesome. Would anybody like to approve the minutes that Matthew sent out earlier in the week?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting.
Wait a second. Thanks Taya. Any questions, comments about the minutes? Alright, let's go through the roll call again. Stacy?
Here.
Taya?
Or. Or.
Tori?
Or.
Shannon?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
And I'm also yes, so the motion passes. Alright, we have one item on the agenda this evening, but I guess before I do that, I don't see any public on. Does anybody else see any public on? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Just for the record, where was it? It was just noticed in the newspaper or? Okay. Is it on the website? I didn't see it. But I'm still getting familiar with the new website.
I believe it is on the calendar. Actually, I'm pretty sure I saw it on the calendar. So it's on the website and it was sent to the paper as well.
Okay, thanks Matthew.
Okay, so we'll skip public comment since there is no public. And we just have one agenda item this evening under new business. So we are here to decide on a recommendation to appoint Jim Barrett to the city of Livingston Planning Board. So Jim, thank you for applying. And I think what we'll do, and Matthew will always catch me if I'm doing this wrong, but I think we have three questions to ask you. So I'll just ask you the the first question and let you answer, second question answer, third question answer, and you can be brief. I think Matthew was prefacing five to six minutes. Are you going to tell me something different, Matthew? Does that sound right to you?
Can we have him just introduce himself first and give a little background on who he is?
Absolutely. Then we'll ask you the questions Jim, and then we'll make a vote.
Okay. Hi. I'm Jim Barrett. I'm a 23-year resident of Livingston, Montana. Nearly 50-year resident of Park County. I have had various occupations in my time, most generally a contractor, builder. I spent time, I did time, I should say, as the Director of the Park County Environmental Council. I'm an artist, lifelong artist, presently pursuing, continue to pursue that. I'm a nice guy. That's about all I can say right now. If you have specific questions about my background or whatever.
Does anybody want to ask specific questions around what Jim just mentioned, or should we move into the first question? Okay.
Here are the questions.
Perfect, okay. Alright Jim, first question, why do you want to be on the planning board?
Well, I have extensive experience in deliberations about planning. I I led an effort in Cook City in the 90s, early 90s to create Park County's first citizen-initiated zoning district. I I have been sort of remiss in participating in, you know, my community. And was looking for some way to be involved. And I learned that the planning board position was available and and then I also learned that you were going to be focusing on the what we used to call the donut area. The extraterritorial area around the city, and I actually was on a committee in the early 2000s, which we actually created a donut clan. So I thought that with the fantastic work you guys did with the growth policy, moving into dealing with that area seemed like a very interesting and hopefully exciting process. And so I thought I'd throw my hat into the ring and see if anybody caught it.
Okay, perfect, thank you. The second question is, what do you think about the draft growth policy?
I think it's great. I think the key points that were talked about in there were, I think we're right on the, right on the money. Dealing with housing, dealing with the, you know, the walkable communities and all that sort of thing. I think you did a, it was a really nicely done progressive document. So I'm, I'm impressed and I'm happy to see that kind of progress made in the community.
Okay, and then with that, briefly talk about one positive change and one negative change you've seen in Livingston since you've been here.
Well, I guess the positive change in Livingston I've seen, I in the, in the, what are 23 or so years I've been here, people seem to be taking a lot more pride in their properties, their neighborhoods. Whether that's the result of just the residual effects of the railroad, railroad leaving and people just getting back on their feet. But I think that the positive improvements made around the community, both in, you know, when the properties themselves, homes, et cetera. I think that was a positive thing. Unfortunately, many of those properties have been converted into vacation rentals. And that to me is unfortunate. So that's a negative thing for me.
Okay. Um, is there anything else you want to add? Jim, those are our three questions and then I'll open it up to board questions, comments.
No, that's, I'm ready for anything.
Okay. Anybody from the board have any questions or comments for Jim? Okay. Oh. Okay, I'm not hearing.
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
This is Shannon. Uh, I just want to, I just want to say a couple things. Jim, I just want to let you know very proud of this board. I think we're an amazing group of people and I really appreciate the time that everyone on this board has done volunteering and dedicating to updating the growth policy. I think one of the things that I will tell you that I love most about this board is we have some very matter-of-fact conversations. We don't always agree, but we keep professionalism and respect for one another at the utmost priority and, and as a result, I think we have a growth policy that our community can be very proud of and, and I just really enjoy the very constructive conversations and the, and the many different perspectives that we have on this board and so I just wanted to give you a little insight into what I feel is the personality of a very, very productive, energetic board and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
I yield.
So I had a comment. You qualified this as a draft growth policy on this document. So when does it become the actual growth policy? Isn't it approved? So isn't it no longer the draft growth policy?
I read Matthew's email. I thought the same thing, but I went with whatever he wrote. I assumed it was the growth, the 2020 growth policy.
No, the growth policy, right? Okay.
Clarifications Stacy.
Yeah, those are technically the old questions, but that's fine.
Okay, I wondered that same thing, but I took it right off of his email.
I think we should give them both a pass since they've been saying draft growth policy for like
Forever.
For like 100 years. No, not 100 years, but 100 times probably.
Yeah.
So when you read the, the growth policy, Jim, you said that you had an interest in the ETJ. Is there any other particular area, chapter or, or of interest that kind of caught your eye or just planning in general?
Just planning in general. I think I've got a my experience working with planners and my education at architecture school and so on. I've always found it fascinating. It's something that I'm interested in and I've always been interested in and spent the last oh, 30 years with much of that time spent on planning issues. So I just yeah, I just am interested in planning in general and I'm, I have no agenda to bring to the, to the board. I look forward to just getting my, finding out what's going on with you folks and getting to know you and and offering my input when appropriate.
Great.
Go ahead Melissa.
I appreciate that Jim. I am, I appreciate those comments and I thank you for applying to serve your community in this volunteer role. And I would echo what Shannon said, we often disagree on this board. The issues are sometimes pretty contentious, but we never seem to treat each other in a contentious way. We're, this is a very healthy I think the relationships on this board and the way we go about our business is very healthy and not toxic. So I'm, I'm really excited and happy about that and I'm really proud of our board for always working to keep topics moving forward. Even when we might not be unanimous, we somehow find consensus. So I think it's a great board to be on and I I'm glad you, it sounds like you share some of those values of thinking big picture and big issue and working towards solutions. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to chime in?
I just have a question for Matthew, actually. So this was the, I'm sorry, I might have missed like a memo with the emails, but just to clarify, this was the only applicant for this last round and it just got, with everything going on, it kind of slipped through the cracks before the last meeting.
Yeah, this was the only qualifying applicant and yeah, it was completely my fault. There's also zoning commission applications going on, so I got messed up and then I had a miscommunication. So totally my fault. Thank you for doing a very quick turnaround on this special meeting. I do appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not upset about it. I think it's, you're human like the rest of us. I just wanted to make sure I understood and I didn't miss any of the memos that came through. Thanks.
And I guess the other thing, just to kind of lay a little bit more background too, is that because the growth policy is finished, we have yet to, you know, actually work on any subdivision reviews or anything like that, as well as we're in the beginning phases of trying to work with the county. We don't even know in what direction everything is going to end up, right Matthew? It's kind of like we're, we're also kind of in a state of flux as to how things are going to be eventually. But anyway, at this point, we're just going to continue doing it the way we've been doing it, right?
Can I offer feedback to that idea? So before we were working on the growth policy, I think Shannon and I were the only two people on this board, maybe Jesse, before we worked on the growth policy, started working on the growth policy. So I think it doesn't mean that we won't have things to work on, it's just that the things will be different to work on. So I would expect that, you know, Matthew has some things lined up for some learning opportunities, education opportunities for us. And I'm imagining, and Matthew, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm imagining that you have some ideas on agenda items as we move forward in time now that we're done with the growth policy.
I have a few ideas. I think hopefully we'll get some direction from the commission on what they would like us to work on as well. We also have the Trails and Active Transportation Plan and the Housing Action Plan, which I expect you to at least see as an agenda item. And potentially make a recommendation on as well.
Yeah, I was just trying to remember how we did it back in the before times. And we didn't have you in the before times. So thank you for helping fill out our agenda and you'll be like, you'll help be a conduit between the board and the city commission to keep things progressing in a meaningful way.
Yep.
So it won't be like an empty agenda. It'll be something more than nothing.
Potentially. As we're transitioning, there may be agendas where we have nothing. It's probably a discussion we should have maybe at the next meeting on ideas you all have for what you would like to be working on potentially out of the growth policy or to bring to the commission to discuss.
Thanks Matthew.
Okay, before we get too too far down the road, does anybody else have anything for Jim? Anybody want to make a motion? And I
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we recommend Jim Barrett for, as a member of the planning board at the next city commission meeting.
Do I have a second? All second? Thanks Shannon. Uh, let's go through roll call. Stacy?
Or.
Taya?
Or.
Tori?
Or.
Shannon? Shannon's four. Melissa?
Four.
And I'm also four. Okay, motion passes. Welcome to the planning board, potentially Jim, as long as the city commissioners are okay with our recommendation and that's how we'll move forward, is giving the city commission the recommendation to appoint you to the planning board.
Well, thank you very much. I'm excited.
We're excited too. And I do echo, you know, the sentiments that were mentioned about how productive and great this board is. So you picked a good one to apply to.
Great. That's what I thought.
Yeah, awesome. Okay, and Jim, you can hang out as a, as a member of the community and listen in, or you can hop off, whatever's easiest for you. We don't have a lot more to talk about. I think the only thing maybe are, you know, under this administrative comments, do we want to do staff update first on last night's meeting and then board comments or does the board have any comments they'd like to make? Okay, let's move into staff updates, Matthew, if you don't mind.
Uh, yeah, and I'll try to make this pretty quick. So city commission did hold what was essentially a working session on the potential overpass, underpass on the western side of town or the northwestern side of town. I thought it was a good meeting, it was productive, a lot of ideas were thrown around. Good discussion between the commission. I think some of the commissioners probably don't see it from the same point of view. A lot of discussions about, well, we have an, any issue with the Fifth Street crossing. A lot of citizens, especially those who live on the north side, have, have reached out to the commission to, to say that it's not adequate. So what are some potential solutions to that? There were some good solutions, I think discussed. There's, I think Commissioner Newt had, had a list of eight of them at the time. Tori did an excellent job representing the planning board. You all saw his prepared statements and he got asked many questions and handled those excellently. I don't have a really detailed update for you unless you want me to go into more details, but essentially it was a working session. And the commission did decide to put, put it on an agenda for a commission meeting. I think in the near future, if it were to go on the ballot, it would need to be decided by the first meeting in August, basically. And Tori and Commissioner Newt, if you want to add anything to that, I am happy to give up the floor to you.
Can share my eight things because I have them written down. Because it's a thing I do sometimes. There were a lot of ideas, you know, the city manager talked about. He had a specific recommendation and he brought up a lot of ideas as well as, I think Matthew and Tori. I can't remember all the ideas of where they, who came up with which ideas, but there were some solutions besides just adding a crossing in order to address the challenges of the two near downtown crossings. One solution would be to do more to improve the Fifth Street crossing, like a more concerted effort. And that could look like a lot of different things and that's what the commission and the city staff would need to discuss. On the B Street crossing, we could do more to improve that crossing as well, that we've never really like these things we've talked about, but we've never had like a concerted effort. Improving infrastructure where we want to see growth. So focusing not on, as Tori framed, you know, Tori explained the concept behind the growth policy of where you put infrastructures, where you'll see growth. So instead, we're thinking about putting infrastructure where the growth policy does suggest we grow. A pedestrian crossing, which we've never discussed formally. The crossing has been brought up in relation to housing policies. So another, another angle is to consider, keep considering housing policies as they come forward and how it works or doesn't work with the crossing or the current crossings or any potential new crossings. Changing traffic flow is something we've never done in a formal consistent way. I think there's been some minor changes when there's construction, but nothing that addresses the core issues that people are concerned about. Increasing the mode share, so that's instead of only focusing on vehicular traffic, also thinking about other ways people move through the community, like walking or bicycling. And also working with the schools, since that seems to be the times of day where we get the most pressure on those crossings is school start and school out. So a more concerted effort to collaborate with the schools and think about how are we moving kids around the community. I think the city manager brought up the bus routes. So it's actually, and not all kids use them, like the kids that are further away from the school use the buses, but the buses actually cost money. They're not free for people in town. So there might be some equity issues when kids on the north side, their families have to pay and kids that live close to school can walk for free. So there were some of those conversations, ways to get at it. So those were the eight things.
Matthew, do you see the planning board playing in a role, a role in in sifting out any of those options and making recommendations to the commission, or is that not what the planning board would be asked to do?
Yes and no. The commission did very briefly discuss having some sort of steering committee to examine the crossing. Under state law, transportation, specifically the coordination of public ways is under the purview of the planning board. So I think in that way potentially you'll obviously see some of the planning documents that will relate to mode shares, the things like the Trails and Active Transportation Plan. It depends if it ends up going on the ballot, that's not something the planning board would have input on and that would end up being likely an engineering study to determine sort of the best route for that. But there's always potential for input from the planning board because public, again, public ways are under your purview. So there is some potential there. I should also note that Shannon and I met with MRL and MDT today about the Fifth Street Crossing. MRL has actually nominated that crossing for MDT funding. So it looks like hopefully there will be some MDT funded improvements to that crossing as well. And we spoke at length about basically multimodal crossings there, which it seems like it's a little bit out of the scope of the, of the actual funding, but we're going to sort of push on that as well. So that's also exciting to do with the Fifth Street Crossing, though that's probably, they said a couple of years down the line before that's all finished up. So just be aware of that. It's something that the city has also started to work on behind the scenes.
What I noticed from the commission meeting was there was some frustration that there wasn't a straight answer and there seemed to be a sense of urgency because of how long this has been an issue. And I think Drell said 40 years because it was 77 when they first even considered a overpass, underpass situation and here we are. I mean, I was two back then. I mean, that was a long time ago. I'm old. So anyway, it just seemed like there was a sense of urgency and a sense of frustration because there wasn't really a good straight answer. So I was just curious about what that process might look like moving forward with eight options maybe in front of them. And how they might negotiate that with a public comment or you know, another, maybe a steering committee to negotiate and go, and work through some of those options. So anyway.
Can I speak to that Jesse?
Sure thing.
So I really liken the crossing to housing. Um, back when I started on the commission, a lot of people were wanting an easy solution to our housing challenges. And there's no easy solution for housing. There's no like one magic piece of policy that fixes all the problems, you know? And so since Matthew has been on staff, a couple of things happened, first of all, right? Like the commission had to shake out some priorities and think about how do we deal with housing? Part of that was hiring Matthew, right? So having this position, expanding that department so that it increased capacity for staff. And then part of it was the growth policy and part of it's the Housing Action Plan. And through those three things, the Housing Action Plan's not done yet. But through those, the first two that have been completed, Matthew being hired and the growth policy, we're already seeing some policy changes, quite a few. Matthew's been working them in because not everything has to come through the planning board. Some things are just city staff because that's how development works is not everything goes through the planning board, public process. Some things are public process and policy and then it's the staff's job to implement those policies. So we're already seeing movement, but planning is one of those things or building and development. I think there's like a lag between policy is put in place and how, when you see the effects of it. So I think that the crossing is very similar. In the next meeting, it's going to be on the agenda as an action item because in a work session, the commissioners can discuss, but we can't make decisions. So we can talk about things and share frustrations and things like that and points of view, but we can't actually formally make a decision. So that has to go on an agenda. And it sounds like the next agenda will have some kind of action item where we're able to make some decisions formally about what we want to do. And like Matthew said, I think there's very different points of view on possible paths forward. So it's unclear what actions will be taken because the commission has not gotten to that point of decision-making. But once we do, then I think it will be more clear because there'll be some priorities laid out. And so that happens now, like when it goes back, it goes back and forth, like between the staff and commission, right? So like the commissions had a conversation, Michael got some input, the city manager, so he can like take that information, give a better staff report or staff, city manager recommendations and we can keep working towards some, something that works, that's feasible for city staff and that the decision, and that the commission can take action on both, like it has to line up in both places. And then the planning board will, will know what the planning board can do, I think, at that point. That's how I see it. I don't think there's any like quick fixes.
Yeah. Thanks Melissa.
Seventies.
I know. I just felt bad because I think that, you know, even, I don't remember who, maybe, maybe said, I just wanted a list so we could be like, yes, yes, yes. But that, it's not that.
But we wanted, on the planning, we wanted a list. We want it to be easy and it wasn't, but we got somewhere. So.
Yep. Perfect. Go ahead Tori.
I think that, my impression was that some commissioners, Melissa, consider at least putting the crossing to a referendum as a political quick fix. Because I think that, I think some commissioners feel that they've gotten a lot of pressure from constituents to do Because I think that, I think some commissioners feel that they've gotten a lot of pressure from constituents to do something. And that without bringing a referendum to the public. They're, they don't feel as if they can say that they're doing something. So I, I don't, I personally don't think that that is the best plan of action, but I do kind of understand it. From a political perspective and I, and I got a sense that a few of them were feeling that way that. We've been hearing this for so long and if we can't say to our constituents that we are actually doing something, then. We're, we're talking out of two sides of our mouths. I, I got that perspective, or I got that. That's, I, that's how I feel some of the commissioners.
So Jesse.
Yeah.
I have someplace I need to be. Are we about done?
Does anybody else have any, well, so that was Matthew's staff report or update. Anybody have any questions for him?
Just very quickly, two more things. I should make the city manager's recommendation clear to you all. Basically, the city manager was recommending that we wait. Until a developer at least pays some proportion of, of that overpass with a, with a subdivision up there. So basically a developer would be on the hook for their. Proportionate share rather than the city taking the full burden. And it was very encouraging to me that it was very clear that the city commission was leaning heavily on the growth policy. When making planning decisions. And, you know, that speaks to what a great job you all did and I thought that was great. So I just wanted to. Congratulate you all and thank the commission for doing that and it was very encouraging.
Go ahead, Taya.
Sorry, I did not have the agenda pulled up and so I think I. And speaking out of turn on the agenda, but. I did want to say thank you to my fellow planning board members for hosting my other fellow planning board members. I thought it was a really good start. Especially with, just with, on a positive note, I know there's a lot of, a lot of things to figure out in the meantime, but. Just wanted to say, say thank you for that first step.
Thanks, Taya. I thought it was pleasant.
And I, I also thought that it was apparent that. We need a lot of communication, so.
And maybe. Yeah. I agree. I thought some light bulbs might have gone off a little bit for all, for. Some attendees, so that was good. Um, okay, anything else before we wrap things up? Stacy's got somewhere to go and I have kids calling me nonstop. Next meeting is seven twenty-one, twenty twenty. Anybody else? Okay, stay tuned for the next commissioner meeting to recommend Jim Barrett to the board. We'll see what they have to say and thank you guys all very much. For attending this special meeting. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Have a good week. Bye.